I hereby call to order this regular meeting of the Board of Education for Willmet School District 39. This Monday, May 20th, 2019. Will the Clerk please call the roll? Here.
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 Principal Cindy Anderson is here with the Ramona preschool students to lead the Pledge of Allegiance. Good evening. Tonight, I have the privilege of being here with some of our early childhood students. And we are so excited to do the Pledge of Allegiance with you. So I will have them all share their names. What's your name?
Emma.
What's your name?
Eli.
Sibby.
William.
What's your name? Leah. And what's your name?
Naomi.
All right. Many of you know that Ray Lechner is retiring this year after 20 years of service to District 39. What fewer of you probably know is that Ray began as the Director of Student Services in the district. And, in that possession, position, led the creation of the Early Childhood Education Program that these kids enjoy and that has helped many, many other kids for over a decade. When he started, the concept of mixing kids that are typically developing with kids that have special needs in a single classroom was novel. In fact, it was difficult to fill that single classroom the first year that it operated. Even in the second year, most of the typically developing kids who enrolled had special needs sibling in the program. But we, both as a district and a community, have learned a lot since those early days. And we can now appreciate how far sighted Ray was back then. This year, the Early Childhood Program has eight full classrooms and nearly 100 students participating. Ray, the Board cannot possibly say thank you individually for each of the ways that you have made this district stronger. But we met quietly with Heather to find a way to say thank you for all the things you've done for the district. The Early Childhood Program stood out as emblematic of your many contributions. It is novel and far sighted. Establishing it required a strength of conviction and bringing people together to step into change. It teaches us all something about how we interact with each other. And it serves us all, reminding us, as you have many times, that inclusion is critical for us all, recognizing and celebrating all of our differences. With that in mind, to honor and commemorate the work and service you've given to District 39, the Board of Education has decided that the District 39's Early Childhood Program will now be known as the Lechner Early Childhood Education Program. On behalf of the Board, thank you, Ray. And now, some of our early childhood students would like to ask Dr. Lechner to lead us through the Pledge of Allegiance.
Are you ready? I pledge allegiance.
So now we'll go back to our regularly scheduled program. Artwork. Kathryn Robinson's Harper Students provided the artwork on display this month. Students practiced a variety of art techniques to make their projects special. After a visit to the Shed Aquarium, 4th graders used one-point perspective to show depth in their aquarium pictures. 3rd graders used their fairy tale unit to inspire their castle paintings, complete with three-dimensional drawing, texture, shading, and reflections. 2nd graders practiced their fine motor skills with weaving. 1st graders applied paper folding techniques to make their works pop. This brings us to our public comment period. I would... Oh, oops, approve of the minutes. I seek a motion to approve the minutes of the April 23rd, 2019 Regular Reorganization and Executive Session Meeting.
I move to approve the minutes of the April 23rd, 2019 Regular Reorganizational and Executive Session Minutes. Meetings.
May I have a second?
Second.
The motion has been made and seconded. Board members, are there any comments, errors, or omissions to the minutes? All the... Yep, that's right. Of all those in favor of approving the minutes as submitted, please indicate by saying yea.
Yea.
The motion carries by general consent. This is an opportunity for audience, the audience who directs the Board. Are there any audience members that would like to speak at this time? Please come forward to the podium. I must remind all guests to use the microphone, state your name and community of residence, and by Board Directive, you are allowed three minutes. I would like to remind everyone that this is a public meeting and all are among neighbors and fellow residents. Appropriate conduct is expected from everyone. We ask that people speak only when called upon and that everyone treat each other kindly and with proper respect. And please refrain from distracting behavior such as loud conversation, cheering, clapping, or booing.
Hello? Oh. Okay, three minutes is gonna be hard for me because I'm chatty, but I will try. My name is Linda McKenzie, and I am the Chair of the Education Foundation, District 39 Ed Foundation, and my posse here with me are members of our exec team. And we just wanted to come to announce that we have decided, as a Board, to donate $42,000 to the district to support the Innovative Classroom Initiative that is part of your strategic plan. So, we are going, our funds will be, we'll be giving $6,000 to each elementary school building and we'll be giving $9,000 to the junior high and to High Crest. And so, the reason for the difference in funds, obviously, is because of the amount of students at each building. And so, our idea is, I know that with the, in the strategic plan and in talking with Ray, with Dr. Lechner, sorry, we talk a lot, so he's Ray. But, in talking with Ray, we know that there is a basic fund that the district is going to be covering through their furniture, regular budgeting. And, so our funds will be for, our funds will be supporting any extra, the enhanced portion of it. So, not all of it, though, but we still will have a little bit of control over it. It'll be similar to how we did the Learning Commons gift, where we will be expecting principals to... They could, they'd be happy. Becky's the loudest, that's surprising. Becky was the one that came to us first, and, but we know that everyone else is excited about it, too. So, but principals, we will be looking forward to you coming to us, similar to how Becky did and her team did, and working with you to figure out what works within our bylaws so that we feel comfortable with what we're donating and that you get what you need. So... But, we have some, and I know I'm going over the three minutes, I'm sorry, but I'm doing it. And we have an incredibly talented artist on our committee, Mari Phillips, who is responsible for any cool stuff you see that comes out of the foundation. So, we have a Publishers Clearinghouse type check. So, the check, if you notice, it's check number 39. And it's obviously for $42,000. It is 1993 to 2018, because it's our 25th year. 6091, our phone number, in case you forget it. And then 39. So, we think we're pretty clever with this, but, so anyway. You're welcome. You get to keep the check, yes. It's all you.
Thank you, and just for the record, that was three minutes on the nose. Is there anyone else who'd like to step up for public comment?
Hi, my name's Amanda Nugent. I'm a resident of Willmet and a longtime volunteer and leader in the outdoor classrooms in the village. I'm also the current Science and Nature enrichment teacher at some of the elementary schools. And I'm here to address the outdoor classroom situation in the, in Willmet. And I collaborated on, sorry. I'm gonna read, because I'm a little nervous. I collaborated on a letter to the school board earlier today to address the pending construction and the loss of the outdoor classroom at High Crest. But I wanted to speak to the outdoor classroom as a whole. "The benefits of outdoor learning and exploration are well documented and cannot be ignored. Studies have shown that just being outside in nature can increase an individual's creativity, improves focus, lower their stress and anxiety. This being in nature is very different than just being outside at recess. It is not the same as playing on a jungle gym and, or playing sports. It is the open exploration and peace and quiet and serenity of wild green spaces that they are provided." And we have invested amazing amounts of money and technology into our district's Learning Commons, and that's all well and good. But they are ignoring the fact, the district is ignoring the fact, that we have always had a Learning Commons. It's the outdoor classroom. They are, in fact, Learning Commons and an incredible resource to our kids. The new district Learning Commons are described as collaborative spaces where kids can discover, tinker, explore, and learn in new and exciting ways. And this perfectly describes the outdoor classrooms that we are not investing in as we are investing in our indoor, technology-based Learning Commons. They are spaces where work can be done in small groups independently, where kids can learn creative and exciting new ways through exploration and experimentation. And that is what we've been doing all along. And yet, while the district is investing hundreds of thousands of dollars towards these new inside spaces, the outdoor classrooms are left with tiny PTA-funded budgets and overburdened parent volunteers. We are not against the new Learning Commons, nor are we against the new construction to better the school layout at High Crest. However, we are concerned that the plans were drawn up without a single bit of input from the people who work there every day for the last 15 years. We were caught completely unaware of the fact that we're losing 40% of the outdoor classroom as it exists at High Crest. And that is not taking into account the destruction of the space as wrecking crews do with trucks and tractors and rocks and mud. So, my guess is it's going to be a total loss of the space. And kids use this space every single day, fall and spring, at High Crest. Hundreds of kids go through this space every week, and it is a resource that is going to be ignored and lost. Outdoor classrooms are becoming more and more popular across the country as the wave of the future. And many schools in our area, Northbrook, Evanston, Kennelworth, Highland Park, Glenview, are all investing in their outdoor classrooms. They are funded by the schools. They have curriculum tie-in. They have teachers and staff positions that are paid for by the school. And our programs are run solely by volunteers. And, that in and of itself seems to be where we're gonna be falling behind, instead of being at the top of the heap. The strategic plan of 2015 states very clearly that the administration was committed to increasing their commitment to the outdoor classrooms and sustainability, and yet, year after year after year, the administration has failed to do so. It is incredibly counter to this statement of intent to decrease our commitment to the OCS by cutting down 40% of the High Crest outdoor classroom, without any kind of commitment to rebuild and compensate for the space. A process that has, we have been invested in over the course of the year, and things are just not getting done, which is the letter that we drafted earlier today to make you aware of. But make no mistake, this is not an issue of replacing square footage. It's about a commitment of intent. I cannot impress you enough, the feedback we get from the kids and the parents.
Time's up.
That kids, this is the space that makes a kid's day. This is the space that makes a difference in their days. And it is devastating to the hundreds of volunteers and the loss of money that the PTA has invested over the years.
Okay, time's up, thank you.
Thank you.
I definitely need my glasses. My name's Serena McBride, and like Amanda, I have been involved in the outdoor classrooms years ago. My children are out of the district. And I came today because I fortunately have had a really nice interaction with Alice Schaaf, who I didn't realize wouldn't be sitting up here today. And I wanted to acknowledge her role for the last, during the last year in communicating with me. She, and her role, I'm just gonna read too. "In her role on the Facilities Development Committee, she listened and responded to concerns from myself and other residents regarding the construction planned at High Crest Middle School this summer, which would reduce, what I understand to be, the outdoor classroom by 40%. She was very open and shared a lot of good information with me. Through conversations, meetings, and email exchanges, she's remained open to ideas about managing the health of the outdoor classroom while under construction and supporting ideas for its improvement as the Learning Commons become complete. Because I come to you today because Alice will no longer be in this role. And I'd like to take a moment and summarize the volunteers' perspective about the High Crest outdoor classroom. The PTA has invested approximately $40,000 in the High Crest outdoor classroom over the past 13 years. The initial investment of $24,000 to design and plant it was supplemented each year with an enrichment budget of approximately $1,000 a year. The students that planted the High Crest outdoor classroom are now in their early twenties. Every day in the fall and the spring, 60 children, every single day, choose to spend their lunch recess in the High Crest outdoor classroom. That represents 8% of that student body. And it has been a very important choice for at least 500 middle school students over the 13 years. As a volunteer, I see the outdoor classroom as a resource for the school that's very similar to the gym, the art room, the library, or your music program. Each space encourages learning, creativity, and collaboration. The High Crest teachers use the outdoor classroom for a variety of lessons and activities, all enhancing the student's learning experience. We have a resource that is revered by other school districts. Five years ago, I was invited to speak at the Illinois Council for Green Schools about District 39's outdoor classrooms. And we have been asked to show other district administrators and volunteers through specifically the High Crest outdoor classroom. Because of our impact...
I'm sorry, time's up.
That's my three minutes, okay.
That's your three minutes, thank you.
Well, I just wanted, I've just, my last request, and the reason I came forth was to ask that someone step into Alice's role and be someone who can be transparent and communicate with the public about this.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to make a public comment? So now it's time for Board reports. I'd like to call on Mr. Cesar Eddy to give the school finance report.
Right. On, the school finance committee met as part of the committee as a whole on May 13th. And, we discussed a bunch of things. I think the most important thing we discussed was we educated ourselves on our bonds and the opportunity to refinance those bonds in 2020. We also discussed an ongoing initiative that the Board has had for reviewing our expenses. And, I probably won't get into too much detail on this. But, but we did get, I think, to some good progress on this in that we've identified, I think, peer districts that most of us agree are truly peers. I think one of our issues in the past has been that we've looked at the North Shore districts as our peers, which they are, but they're not the same size we are. So, we found a group of peers that are about our size, which I think was very helpful for us. We also reviewed the tentative budgets for the upcoming year. And, we reviewed budget resolutions that we're going to be voting on, I believe, this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Now we have the Facilities Development Committee, led by Ms. Dernwiler.
The FTC met, and the Board continued reviewing the large space AC costs for each school. This time, we included the staff prioritized choices in the summary spreadsheet. Just a little bit of background on this for some that haven't been with us. This past fall, the Board requested an overview of the large space air conditioning for the schools. And the committee first reviewed the spreadsheet showing where current cool air is provided and the occupancy for those spaces. That spreadsheet assisted the Board in prioritizing which schools might benefit most from receiving additional air conditioning based on need. Ms. Crispino explained the cost estimates provided by STR Architects and Nicholas and Associates. And at the time, the committee also considered enrollments and capacity for those large spaces. After a lot of discussion about goals and options for air conditioning in the schools, the committee resolved that staff input prioritizing choices would be really crucial information for us before we could make any determination about air conditioning. So, at the last meeting, the committee reviewed this feedback along with information showing classrooms by school with air conditioning. And now, the administration was asked to place these priorities in the long-range planning projections for next month's FTC meeting.
Thank you. Now we'll hear from a WCSEA report from Ms. Paling.
So, the WCSEA met today. We approved the tentative budget for fiscal year 2020. That budget will be posted May 23rd, and there'll be a public hearing on August 26th. In addition, we set dates for next year's meeting. Three meetings.
So now it's time for the Community Review Committee report. You're up again.
This one's easy. The CRC met on May 6th. They completed their report on K-4 mobile learning, which they are going to be presenting shortly tonight, along with the audit of the 2014-2015 CRC report. And their next meeting will be June 3rd.
Thank you. Now we have the Educational Foundation, Ms. Stone.
Yes, the Ed Foundation met on May 15th. They voted in a new exec committee and Board members. They approved the fiscal year 2020 budget. They approved the $42,000 gift that was announced earlier this evening. And they have their open house for their unframed project on June 4th at 3:15 in the art wing of the junior high.
Thank you. Now we have the Illinois Association of School Boards, Ms. Dernwiler.
So, there's, not, there's no actual news to report for ISB. But, once again, I wanted to give a little bit, going into the summer, I think it's really important for new Board members to understand the process that ISB is going through right now. They are planning for the III Joint Annual Conference that's gonna happen in the fall, in November. And, every year, the ISB Delegate Assembly is held in conjunction with the III Conference. And at that meeting, they conduct the, their, their annual business, the annual business of the association. And one of the most important components of that meeting is the consideration of resolutions that have been submitted by member boards. Currently, ISB is taking submissions through mid-June, June 26th. Proposals right now are being submitted by member boards for new ISB resolutions, amendments to existing position statements, reaffirmations of existing position statements, and belief statements. The decision of the Delegate Assembly regarding proposed resolutions determines ISB's future direction. And, so it's really important that we pay attention to these new proposals when they're presented in the fall. And, while at this time, our Board does not have any resolutions or positions to submit, rest assured that we will be watching all of these new proposals when they are, when they are released and, and come out in the fall. And, we want to make sure that any of them, any new proposed positions or statements align with our district, and that we will be voting on them in November, so.
Thank you. Now we have a legislative update, Ms. Stone.
Yes, there was a ton of activity in Springfield. I've decided to focus my report on the things that seemed the most germane and that were also the furthest along in the legislative process. On Wednesday, the Senate Government Accountability and Pensions Committee unanimously approved House Bill 3053, which contains procedures to reduce the number of school districts by 25%. That bill is now pending in the Senate. And there were a number of bills that were approved by the Senate and are being sent to the Governor for consideration. House Bill 355 provides that a provider of professional development activities for educator license renewal may make available training on inclusive practices in the classroom that examine instructional and behavioral strategies that improve academic and social-emotional outcomes for all students with or without disabilities in a gen ed setting. House Bill 423, among other provisions, would temporarily end the test of basic skills as a prerequisite for receiving a teaching license. House Bill 907 directs the Department of Human Services to create and maintain an online database and resource page on its website for mental health resources specifically geared towards school counselors, parents, teachers, social workers, and school support personnel. House Bill 921 provides that if an educational support personnel person, employee is dismissed as a result of a reduction in force or rift, and that employee accepts reemployment within the same district, that employee maintains any rights accrued during the previous service with the school district. House Bill 1475 provides that the definition of school employee may not be interpreted to require a school district charter school or non-public school to hire additional personnel for the sole purpose of the personnel to serve as a delegated care aide for students that have epilepsy or seizure-related occurrences. The student's parent or guardian is responsible for creating a seizure action plan with the school, the student's school. House Bill 1579 provides that before sentencing a juvenile for a threat against a school building or school personnel, the court must order a mental health evaluation. And my personal favorite is House Bill 1873, doubles the fines for violations when approaching overtaking and passing school buses. I see that all the time.
Thank you. Now it's time for information items, written communication. The Board did not receive any written communication this month. The board did not receive any written communication this month. Next are administrative announcements from superintendent and staff. Dr. Lechner.
Yes. And at this time each year, we have a major student recognition evening, and we're going to turn it over to Kelly Jackson.
Good evening. We have four different groups that we're going to be recognizing this evening. Lots of stellar students in our midst. And first, I'm going to have Mrs. Erin Schwartz come up and talk a little bit about our writing contests and our winners.
Thank you. I'll start with the Daughters of American Revolution. Each year, the Daughters of the American Revolution Skokie Valley Chapter challenges students to enter the American History Essay Contest. This writing contest was established to encourage young people to think creatively about our nation's history and learn about history in a new light. This year's topic was about the 19th Amendment to the U.S. Constitution and prompted writers to tell a story of lives directly impacted by women gaining the right to vote. Womet Junior High's school is proud to have six winners in this contest. In 7th grade, in first place, Isaac Hatchett; in second place, Kaminta Ho; and third place, Nick Gonzalez. In 8th grade, first place is Tyler Wang; second place, Daria Valkova; and third place, Amelia Dobek. We also are recognizing the Scholastic Art and Writing Awards, which is a national contest with a mission to identify students with exceptional artistic and literary talent and present their remarkable work to the world. Hundreds of thousands of entries are submitted each year in over 20 categories. At the regional level, Gold Key Awards are the highest recognition bestowed upon work. Reception of a Gold Key Award means that a piece has been considered for national-level recognition. Annabelle Ma, WJHS 8th grader, was selected as a Gold Key Award winner for her poem, "Mask."
Thank you, writers. The next group that I would like to recognize is our Science Olympians. All right. The Womet Junior High Science Olympiad team has had another fun and educational year. Students have worked hard since November to prepare for building, testing, and lab events. The team attended two invitational competitions and a regional competition at which they earned 4th place, and a state competition at which they earned 16th place. We are incredibly proud of their dedication to love and dedication to and love for science. We look forward to seeing the 7th graders return next year and to seeing the 8th graders as competitors for Nutria. And the Science Olympiad was sponsored by Ms. Marose, who couldn't be here this evening, but she did a phenomenal job leading them. So I am going to grab their certificates, and we will pass those out. And we have, you can see some duplicate Science Olympians and writers as well. So Eric Lee, Sarah Lynn, Benjamin Shoemaker, Holly Smith, Jimmy Sohigian, Ian Switzer, Tyler Wang, Amelia Dobek, and Hayden Fountain. Great. The next group that I am going to be recognizing are all of our chess players. So let me have all of our chess friends come on up. And again, we have some duplicates. Jeff Yasumoto, who is a fabulous parent, wasn't able, he's out of town, so he wasn't able to be here tonight, but he was really thankful for the recognition for his chess participants. This fall, the chess team participated in the 2018 All Grade State Tournament, which was held in Naperville on November 3rd. And District 39 winners included WJHS, Highcrest, and Ramona. The WJHS team were state champions, 7th graders. The Highcrest Middle School team took 2nd place, and they were 5th graders. And the Ramona Elementary team took 4th place, and they were 4th graders. So our WJHS participants were Sarah Lynn and Kayden Lu. Our Highcrest participants were Nathan Finkelstein and Benjamin Newman. And our Ramona participants were Mirsa Arslandajkic. Garrett Estabrook, Nuri Jong, Jacob Myers, Maxwell Zhao. And one more recognition. This spring, we had a team place in the K8 State Championship on March 9th at Normal, Illinois. Highcrest placed 9th, and it was the combined 6th and 7th grade elementary section. Tonight, we have Benjamin Newman, who was also on that team. So congratulations. How about a round of applause for all of our chess players? All right. And our final group that we're going to recognize is our Kurtamen team. So I'm going to hand the microphone over to Megystra Shoemaker.
Good evening. So we have four extraordinary students here today. This year, our WJHS Kurtamen team took first in state for the fourth time in the past 10 years, which is pretty awesome. They worked really hard. It is a combined effort of 17 individuals, these extraordinary kids who, Kurtamen means competition in Latin, and they answer all these questions about Roman history, culture, derivatives, vocabulary, mythology. And they really answer incredibly hard questions that just blow our mind, like, what Etruscan king shoved his hand into the fire? And, you know, who was assassinated on March 15th, 44 B.C., but that's a little bit easier. But these four, however, we placed first in the region, and these four just worked so hard tirelessly in every single principle within the Roman history world and really did a great job. Also, we also took the National Latin Exam this year, and all four, well, three of them, Sam could not make it to the test that day. All three of them got a gold medal on the National Latin Exam, and Charlotte placed, she got a gold medal, but she also got a 40 out of 40, which is a perfect paper. And only 640 people in the world, because it's not really national, it's the world, 640 people in the world got a perfect paper, which puts her in the top 0.5% of Latin students in the world. So it's a great thing. So. Charlotte also received our MVP award within our region. So she answered the most questions correctly of anyone else in the region, and she received a really great Kennedy Center Honor Level Medal for that work. So these guys, Charlotte Colkins, Alexandra Chimaevich, Sam Schmidt, and Akiva Sharon did such an amazing job, and I'm so proud of them.
Thank you, and congratulations to all of our students.
I just want to repeat that. Congratulations to everybody. Really wonderful. Now we're going to move on with reflections.
Yes. Reflections is the district's annual event honoring retirees and staff longevity. On May 15th, we honored 21 5-year employees, 10 15-year employees, four 25-year employees, and eight retirees. Michigan Shores continues to be a beautiful venue, as we had 200 attendees for the celebration. The staff were excited to be honored, and it was a wonderful feel-good evening. Next, we have administrator contractual salary and benefits. The administrators' benefits and contracts are ready for your approval tonight, Board of Education. Salaries increases have been indexed to the Consumer Price Index. So for fiscal year 20, the Board of Education has authorized aggregate salaries tied to CPI, which is 2.1%. Next is the junior high school safety dog. A few weeks ago, a school assembly was held at the junior high, and students were introduced to their school safety dog named Zeus. During that assembly, students learned about the dog's training and how he keeps us safe. And they also had a chance to preview a demonstration. Last week, the junior high had its first official safety check. The students waved hello while Zeus went to work. It went extremely well. Nothing was found. As indicated in previous messages, the aim of a school safety dog is to prevent contraband from being brought to school. I need to thank Tony DiMonti for spearheading all of our school safety efforts, including Zeus. Thank you, Tony. Next is property tax assessment appeals. Through a board resolution, District 39 is authorized to intervene in property tax assessment appeals according to board-established limits. District 39 joins with Nutria High School, the Village of Womet, the Library and the Park District to intervene with PTAB and with the Cook County Circuit Court of Appeals. Property tax index numbers and estimated refunds are listed on the report for new property tax interventions this month. And lastly, Freedom of Information Act. The district received a commercial FOIA request from SmartProcure requesting all employee contact information. The district also received FOIA requests from Construct Connect Chicago requesting copies of bid tabulations and selected contractor lists for Harper Construction. Next, Daniel Day made a second FOIA request for long-term sub-teaching positions that require teaching certificates and licenses for the school years 2004, 2008, 2012, 2013, 2014, 2015, and 2016, and 2017. Finally, K-12 Transportation Research requested all current home-to-school and special education transportation vendor contracts. And that is the end of the announcements.
Thank you, Dr. Lechner. Now we'll move on to strategic plan updates. We will ask for the CRC reports.
We are here to welcome the CRC. We have two reports this evening, and the first one is the audit. The audit.
This is going to be short and sweet. So three, let's go. Three years ago, the CRC determined that all future CRCs should audit the reports three years after their completion. And the report from three years ago was the report on cultivating growth-minded, resilient students. There were six overarching recommendations in that report, and I will refer you to the printed materials to see the path that each one of those recommendations took. By and large, they were all adopted. I think there was one that wasn't. I think it may have already been being done in the district. The biggest outcome from that report was the adoption of the recommendation to reevaluate school start times. And since the 2017-2018 school year, now all D-39 schools now begin after 8:20 a.m. So sometimes people ask, you know, what does CRC do? Is the work impactful? And I always say, you know, the CRC recommended Learning Commons, and now there's Learning Commons. The CRC recommended that schools, the school days change times, and we changed the times. Are there any questions or comments?
Thank you for this report. Next, we have the report on mobile learning.
Hello. My name is Maggie O'Brien, and it was my great pleasure to serve as the CRC president this year. I'm joined by Sarah Leahy, who's one of our wonderful subcommittee leads and was, played an instrumental role in helping us put this report together. I'd like to start off by thanking Dr. Lechner for giving his time and resources to the CRC for over 12 years. His guidance and support were integral to the important work the CRC has done, and we've been very fortunate to have such a dedicated superintendent supporting our community. So thank you. I'd also like to thank Erin Stone for serving on the CRC for four years. Our achievements would not have been possible without your dedication and tenacity. So thank you. Now on to the report. This year, the CRC board was comprised of 24 dedicated individuals. Half of them were administrators and teachers, and the other half were parent representatives from each school. We researched the topic of mobile learning in the elementary grades to better understand the situation in our schools and make recommendations that will lead to improvements in teaching and understanding. We chose this topic, to study this topic, due to concerns from District 39 administrators and teachers regarding a lack of digital learning opportunities in these grades. Currently, District 39 teachers and students have access to share devices via carts. There's often more need than availability. There's about eight carts per school, and they each have 24 devices on them. About half of them are iPads and half are laptops. And as a result, teachers are not able to predict whether they will have access to the cart and therefore cannot proactively create lesson plans and differentiate learning utilizing the devices. Also, the devices are used for assessments, and since there are not enough devices for students to use simultaneously, major assessment windows are extended. To thoroughly research this topic, we broke up into two subcommittees. One subcommittee was led by Sarah Leahy, and their focus, I can't even, there we go, I can read that one better. Oh, yeah, go back. Sorry. To the, right there, yeah. Okay. Their focus was on technology programs and best practices. The second group was led by Amy Paling, and their focus was on current resources and practice in District 39 and local school districts. Okay, now I can go to the next one. Thanks. I think you went to, go back. There you go. Yep. Okay. Our survey to District 39 kindergarten through 3rd grade teachers revealed much frustration with the current cart system. Only 21% of teachers say that they can get access to the devices when they need them, and they are not able to plan technology into their lesson plans effectively. Survey results revealed that the majority of our teachers believe that technology implementation on a one-to-one level will lead to improvements in teaching and learning. I'd also like to point out that while a one-to-one student-device ratio often means that the devices are available for students both at school and at home, it can also mean that the device is only available for students exclusively at school. And research from published sources and studies supports one-to-one technology in the classroom. While face-to-face learning remains fundamental in elementary education, technology provides greater opportunities to differentiate instruction. Research from studies and site visits shows that technology is far more likely to be transformational when used regularly. And this research has led the CRC to make the following recommendation. District 39 should increase access to technology so that every student has access to one device that can be used in homeroom classrooms as well as special classes with consistency across grade levels. A large international study of over 100 countries and 10,000 teachers showed that technology implementation at a one-to-one level provides significant benefits to teachers and students, however, cannot and should not replace personal instruction and other traditional modes of learning. Studies on current 21st century classrooms show that working relationship between pen and paper and modern technologies already exists. The CRC supports this mixture of approaches. And there's an overwhelming majority of experts that caution balance. Therefore, the CRC recommends that District 39 advocate for a balanced approach to technology use in the classroom, supporting a blend of traditional and innovative modes of learning. In order for students to thrive in a rapidly changing world, they must build their 4Cs and higher-order thinking skills. Through our site visits, we learned that technology can become a powerful tool in helping students achieve these skills. Technology tools should build on higher-order thinking skills and rather than just reinforcing skill and drill type of learning. Therefore, the CRC recommends that technology use in the classroom enhance instruction, emphasizing the 4Cs of modern education and higher-order thinking. Okay, we're swapping out here. Another recommendation has to do with having a vision statement for how technology is used. So our research indicated that there's significant benefits at schools and districts that had a clear technology vision or statement of philosophy where the goals and purposes of technology are outlined. And this is helpful for teachers as well as their planning their instruction. If they have a sense from the district of what the vision is, they can better implement that in the classroom. So the recommendation. So the recommendation is simply that D-39 should define a statement of philosophy about the use of technology in the classroom to provide a district-wide purpose and unifying goals. Okay, and this was an important one in our research, I think, that sort of hit home with a lot of people on the committee, that professional development is key to a successful transition to one-to-one technology. And particularly, tiered training was the most effective way to train teachers on new technology, and some of the articles I read were sort of entertaining on this. They said, look, if you have some teachers who basically can barely write an email, and then you have other teachers who are using fancy apps in their classroom on a daily basis, they don't want to be trained in the same room, and they're not going to respond as well, right? Because you don't want to be frustrated and behind everybody. You also don't want to be ahead of everybody and bored. So the idea is to have tiered training sessions and really get each teacher on board with technology at their own pace. And the CRC recommendation is that D-39 should provide in-depth professional development in advance of technology implementation and in an ongoing manner. All right, and this point was headed up by Tony Demonte, who did a lot of the research on this one. Key findings were that research on health and wellness regarding tech use provides suggestions on a range of topics. The ones that we focused on in our research were vision, weight, ergonomics, hearing, and mental health. And our findings, you know, are all in the report, but I think some of the important ones that we had talked about on the committee is that there wasn't a strong link between mental health and technology use in the classroom. There's a lot of research out there on social media and things like cyberbullying and all kinds of things that happen on social media that can affect the mental health of youth. But there really is less alarming information out there when it comes to technology use in the classroom. So we found the findings pretty neutral in that area, and the recommendation from the CRC is having to do with the fact that we thought that we could become a thought leader in this field, that we could be sort of a frontrunner in thinking about these health and wellness risks in advance of implementing the technology. So the official recommendation is that D-39 will become a thought leader in the field of health and wellness as related to technology use, with an emphasis on physiological as well as social, emotional health, and that D-39 should strive to proactively educate parents so that proper technology use is balanced both at home and at school. And I just wanted to add, there's like a really distinct use between how we use technology during the day at school and how kids use gaming systems and cellphones and et cetera at home. So part of being a thought leader would be to reach out to parents and say, yes, we are, you know, increasing access to technology at school, but let's think about your child's entire day, and how can we, we be sort of monitoring? It's not the school's job to monitor at-home use, but it could be D-39's mission, I guess, to sort of educate parents. All right, and this one is about the tools and apps that we would use in technology, that there should be a process in place for selecting which apps or programs are used in the classroom, and after the technology is in use, that the district should establish a continuous evaluation system. And we found research, there was a variety of research saying that you could evaluate apps and educational programs in different ways, and I think what the committee found is it doesn't matter exactly what system we're using to evaluate apps, as long as there is a system, so that teachers aren't left in the lurch thinking, well, there's 150 apps for helping kids read. Which one's going to be the best, and which one are we going to use? So if D-39 could help establish a process whereby teachers know which apps they're going to be using. So the official recommendation is that D-39 will develop an established vetting process for educational apps and programs, while also establishing a system to continually reevaluate the effectiveness of technology-based programs used in the classroom. So, to conclude, our research led us to conclude that when used effectively, technology on a one-to-one level can transform learning and empower our students to build the critical 21st-century skills that they need to thrive. And we, the CRC, believe that these recommendations will help fulfill our district's mission to nurture, guide, and challenge students to become creative thinkers, collaborators, and socially responsible, compassionate, and productive citizens of a global society. Are there any questions?
Board members, are there any questions? And first of all, let me say, thank you very much. I know how much work goes into producing a CRC report, so, thank you all. Board members?
I wanted, again, to say thank you, and also reaffirm that the format that, that you're using now is, is really good. I don't remember exactly one, two, three years ago where it changed, but, but I think this new format is useful and concise, and, and I think that's a, it's been a nice step forward, this format. I had a, a follow-up question. I was going to ask it in one way, and I know the, it gets addressed a little bit, but the, was it part of your scope to look at the trade-off between tablets and laptops in particular, iPads versus Chromebooks? I know weight was brought up, but what were the, was that part of your scope, and what was the criteria?
Well, according to the CRC report, kind of mission or guidelines, we are supposed to focus on strategic recommendations, so more of the, the how and the why, or the what and the why, but the how and the more implementation-focused recommendations, we leave up to the district. So we did not look at that.
Okay, I mean, you did mention a little bit with weight, was, what, what, so?
Yes.
Weight was for, I, I didn't quite understand the, the significance of weight, and so if you could expand on that a little bit.
Yeah, it was in sort of the health and wellness section, basically saying, and Tony, you can chime in here if you want, that a really important thing to take into consideration is the weight of the device and the mobility of the device, which would encourage children to either move around or not move around. And so I think in the report, we mentioned like a television is obviously stationary and unidirectional. So while we are not recommending a specific device to D-39, we would recommend some kind of device that makes it easier for kids to stand up and collaborate with a friend or take it over to the corner, you know, anything that's light and, and mobile.
Then I had, had one more follow-up, and again, I don't know if it was in the scope of your report or if in, prefer, you, you touched on it, but the, the value or importance of keyboarding, did that even come into your research? If not, that's fine, but if it did, if you had any insights?
My subcommittee did not look into that, did we?
I can say that from a district level, we find them extremely important. We've already changed our iPad program to incorporate them at the upper grades.
Thank you.
Do other board members have questions?
I do. Yeah, Mr. Demonte? First of all, I want to thank you for an outstanding report. And I actually, I love the idea of being a thought leader. It really struck me. I, I kind of kept going back to that over and over again. But I have a question about that, because just a, I guess, a, a thought. When you were looking at that, and you mentioned that a big part of that was educating parents and bringing them into the fold, which I completely agree with. Parents have to be a partner in this, no matter what we do. But what I was wondering was, did it come up in terms of this specific thing, and I'm just speaking, I think, as a parent, did it come up in your research about educating, or I guess since you're talking about being a thought leader in this and no one else has done this, the possibility of educating the children in this area prior to educating the parents because, or alongside of educating the parents? Because when a parent tells a child that something is not healthy, they don't listen. If they learn at school that it's going, that it's doing something to their body, and they might learn literally with their science teacher, let's say, what that is physically doing when they're going through it, if it, after a certain period of time, what it might do to their vision or their hearing if they listen to it too loud, they become, they might become more invested in it, so that when they go home and the parent is invested and learns how to limit it, the child is on board with it instead of a fight. It's just a thought.
Yeah, I was going to say, is, am I saying your last name correctly? Demonte? Mr. Demonte had a wonderful idea during one of our meetings where he said we could even be posting like a sign near where the students would be picking up their electronics, one of those things with like pictures that shows like, don't hold your neck like this for tech neck, or, you know, take a break every 20 minutes, that some of these could be pictorially presented to our younger students, and it could be sort of a standard poster that might be around the school. But certainly, I don't know how the school would implement it exactly, which teachers would take which specific burden, but if the teachers were talking to them about tech neck and vision breaks and, you know, they might explain to the students, we have purchased these headphones that have volume controls because it's actually not healthy for your ears to have the sound go too loud. So if they're getting that from the teachers, I do think that would help, you know, tremendously.
Yeah, it's just so neat to have that at such a young age, to start to learn it instead of when they're in high school and they're not listening anymore. It's great. Thank you for this, by the way.
Do other board members have questions?
I don't really have a question. Thanks a lot. I, I know it's a really hard topic, and I think this is a very constructive report, so I think we're going to get a lot out of it. Thank you.
Sure, thank you. First of all, thanks again for the report. We've come quite a long way in one-to-one devices over the past six years, since I've been on the board. I can't tell if it's implicit in the report or just beyond the periphery. Are you making an assumption about whether the one-to-one devices we would have would go home or not, or is that sort of a little bit past what you went through?
In our, sorry. In our report, the only reference we do have to it is that we would advise, we would, I don't know if the word is advise, but in K through two, that they do not go home. But we didn't, again, put any like implementation kind of focused recommendation on that specifically, other than we would caution, or, you know, based on our research and studies, we would recommend for K through two that they stay at school. Is that correct?
Yeah, I think we shied away from making a specific recommendation there on purpose, thinking that the district would decide that.
Okay.
And I can give you the early information about that. We were thinking initially, no, and maybe someday we would consider fourth, but we, right at this point in time, we're not ready for that to happen.
Okay. And then the only other comment I wanted to make is that I really liked Ms. Sternwiler's comment about educating parents and children next to each other at the same time, in terms of all of the issues around tech neck and the others. So, thanks for that.
Other comments?
Just want to thank you for the report, and I have the advantage of working in an elementary school. This is my fourth year there, and this is the first year we've had enough devices for every child to have one, and it's a game changer. Things that we couldn't do before, we can do now. Just today, they had their iPads in the library, the third graders I work with, and they had previously written poems, and they made the Dash robots read the poems, and then programmed them to do a little victory dance when they finished the poems. That was not stuff we were doing before we had enough devices, so, thank you.
Other comments, questions? Thank you very much. Next, we have annual business. Dr. Lechner?
Yeah, the first report is fiscal year 2020, District 39 tentative budget. Now, the truth in taxation statutes require the Board of Education to adopt a tentative budget. This includes making the budget publicly displayed for at least 30 days prior to adopt, adoption and holding a public hearing. In, in a broad sense, operating fund revenues projected for next year at 63.1 million, with expenditures in the operating funds at 61.7 million. However, we have an additional expenditures of 3.8 million for school construction, resulting in a planned net operating deficit of 2.4 million for fiscal year 20, and Ellen Crispino has this report.
Thank you, Dr. Lechner. In March, the non-operating funds were presented for the budget, and in April, a draft of the operating funds was shared with the community. The only change in the operating fund budgets from the April presentation is an additional $249,000 that was added for the purchase of additional iPads to support mobile learning at the elementary schools. The decrease in operating funds of 2.4 million is made up of operating revenue of 63.1 million, less expenditures of 61.7 million, and 3.8 million in other uses of funds. The decrease in the operating funds balance is due to one-time planned construction projects in fiscal year 2020 of $7 million. Our anticipated fund balance at June 30, 2020, is estimated at 33.8 million, as reflected on this slide. This represents an expenditure to fund balance ratio of 54.8 percent in the operating funds. In the non-operating funds, revenues exceed expenditures by $47,000 after debt service payments. This balance will be used for future debt payments. Our anticipated fund balance at June 30, 2020, is estimated at 1.7 million. The fund balance for all funds is anticipated to be 35.5 million at June 30, 2020. As additional information is received in the next few months, the final budget will be adjusted before a public hearing in August. After approval tonight, the budget information will be available on the district website and a hard copy at the district office for public review. In addition, there will be a publication of notice of public hearing on Monday, for a hearing on Monday, August 26, 2019. Are there any questions?
Do board members have any questions? Thank you very much.
Next, we have the fiscal year 2020 Wilmec Community Special Education Agreement tentative budget. District 39 serves as the fiscal agent on behalf of the Special Education Cooperative that includes District 39 and Evoqua District 37. The Illinois State Board of Education requires the WCSCA to keep separate accounting records and to follow all the same Illinois state budget guidelines as all other school districts do in Illinois. Ellen Crispino has this report.
Thank you, Dr. Lechner. As you can see on this page, the revenues offset and expenditures are the same. This is basically a flow-through entity, and it's a combination of District 39 and Evoqua This last slide is the budget development calendar that was presented in January 2019. We are moving towards the end of the process with your approval tonight and the announcement of the public hearing. On August 26, we'll have the public hearing and the final approval of the fiscal year 20 budget. The budget will then be submitted to the ROE, ISB, and the county clerk prior to September 30. Are there any questions?
Board members, are there any questions? Thank you.
Next, we have three budget resolutions that I want to review, and these are going to be capturing everything that we've been working on the last couple of months. The first is the fiscal year 2020 transfer from the Operations and Maintenance Fund to the Capital Projects Fund. The resolution authorizes the district to do accounting transfers between the O&amp;M Fund to Capital Projects. The transfers occur after board approval of the payments. This approach removes spikes that you might see in the O&amp;M Fund due to one-time construction projects. The second is a fiscal year 2020 inter-fund loan from the Educational Fund to the Operations and Maintenance Fund. This is only a short-term inter-fund loan from the Ed Fund to the O&amp;M, primarily to promote timely payments of construction projects. We often don't need this, but sometimes we do. The short-term loan helps us adequately fund balance our, our projects, and if needed, they're repaid, repaid by the end of the school year. And the third is fiscal year 2020 permanent transfer of funds from the Ed Fund to the O&amp;M. As reflected in the tentative budget, District 39 plans to permanently transfer $4 million from the Ed Fund to the O&amp;M Fund to help finance approved projects. Finally, a public hearing will be held with advance published notice in the newspaper. Ellen Crispino, anything to add on these?
Just a couple of quick comments on the first budget resolution from the Operations and Maintenance Fund to Capital Projects. The amount of the transfer will not exceed $7,22,614, which is the approved construction cost for the High Crest and Harper bids. And the public hearing notice on the permanent transfer will be published on August 8, and the public hearing will be held on August 26. Thank you.
Board members, any questions? Thank you.
The next item is 2019-20 Student Staff and Planning. This also is an annual report, which details anticipated changes in staffing for the upcoming school year. Student enrollment and registration are monitored by administration weekly, beginning with the student registration on April 17, right up through the start of the school year. The administration adheres to the board class-size guidelines, which is 24 students in grades K-2, 27 in grades 3-5, and 29 students in grades K through 8, 6 through 8, but note that these are, these guidelines are upper limits, and we're often below that. There has been and continues to be an increase in special education staff. This is necessary to port the needs of our students within our schools who have unique and special needs. Finally, there is also an additional support for differentiated instruction in grades K through 6. The differentiation support teachers in grades K-4 will increase their support in math. At High Crest, an additional 1.0 FTE is being recommended for a math specialist. At High Crest, an additional 1.0 FTE is being recommended for a math specialist to provide more direct math support in grades 5 through 6. There is less of a need for this in grade 7 and 8 because the math classes are already differentiated. Dr. Glouacki, anything to add?
I would just like to highlight that, as Dr. Lechner shared, this is just the beginning. We watch these numbers weekly and as we get closer to the start of the year, almost daily, to make sure we stay in line with the recommendations, so, it's our starting point.
Board members, any questions?
I have a couple of questions. I was a little confused by the projections. How, how much, how down are we roughly? I was kind of having a hard time reading this.
So, if you look specifically down at the last line where it says District 142...
Yes.
That was 142 FTE, full-time equivalent staff members, to the projected 138 for this coming school year. It's projected at this point. It will change.
Yeah, it goes up as sections break, as she indicated. We monitor weekly.
Okay. And the other question I had was just, the, just curious, the staffing for the Student Services Special Ed, do we, does this include the two extra FTE that we're sharing with Evoqua? Remember, we added two because they were kind of not sure. Do we have that extra person?
Yeah, we, yeah, we have the staff because we hire them, but that's offset by funds coming from them.
Right.
Right.
Okay, they may or may not.
Right.
Okay, so that's good.
Other questions? Mr. Seen?
Sorry, I have a very nitpicky comment. I apologize in advance. In the report, it says the Board of Education has made it its goal to maintain class size averages of no more than 24, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. I think our goal is to make sure, and this is, again, I'm being very nitpicky here, but I think our goal is that no class size should be larger than 24. So, that's, I would just delete the word averages from that statement.
That was an excellent observation.
Any other questions? Okay, then we'll move to board policy review.
Tonight, the board reviews for first read the last policies in Section 4 for the year and one revised policy from Section 3. Dr. Glouacki has this report.
So, as we've done throughout the year, this is the last portion of Section 4 and a lot of revisions have been made to some of the policies. Many are being recommended for deletion. The one I would like to point out specifically is Policy 4:175, Facility Planning, because it's really changing its entire content, entitle, to, it's recommended to Convicted Child Sex Offender Screening and Notification. The content for facility planning is moving to Policy 4:150, so, we're not losing it, it's just moving.
Board members, any questions or comments?
Yeah, I'll do one if you don't mind. So, just as a reminder to new board members of our process on this, which as I recall, although Dr. Glouacki remind us for sure, the idea is that we get these in the packet, we read them this weekend, we, if we need to take over, take up a little bit more time looking over them, we do. And then we had, a lot of times, there'll be minor edits or even, you know, more significant ideas that we want to get in the policies and so we try and get those to Dr. Glouacki by Friday, by the end of the week. We then go through a second reading and, you know, although we try to keep the second readings to be the last reading, occasionally, we go to a third reading and that's been okay. Sorry. Have I summarized that properly?
You've got it.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Seen. Very helpful. Anyone else? Okay, this is the sec, that brings us to our second opportunity for public comment. Are there any audience members that would like to speak at this time? Please come forward to the podium. If none, we'll continue with our agenda. The consent agenda, the next order of business is the consent agenda under action items. Are there any items that the board would like pulled from the consent agenda? Mr. Penzica, please proceed with the motion.
I move to approve the personnel report dated May 20, 2019. I move to approve the administrators' 2019-2020 contractual salary and benefits with aggregate increases at 2.1%. I move to approve the fiscal year 20 tentative budget as contained in this report for immediate public display and further, I move to approve the publication of notice of a public hearing on the tentative budget to be held at 7:00 PM prior to commencing the regularly scheduled Board of Education meeting on Monday, August 26, 2019. I move to approve the Wilmec Community Special Education Agreement fiscal year 2020 tentative budget as contained in this report for immediate public display and further, I move to approve the announcement of a public hearing on the tentative budget to be held at 7:00 PM prior to commencing the regularly scheduled Board of Education meeting on Monday, August 26, I move to approve the attached resolution authorizing accounting transfers from the Operations and Maintenance Fund to the Capital Projects Fund and I move to approve the attached resolution authorizing an inner loan fund from the Educational Fund to the Operations and Maintenance Fund. And I approve the, I move to approve the hearing to discuss a permanent inter-fund transfer from the Education Fund to the Operations and Maintenance Fund and further, I move to approve the publication of notice of a public hearing on the permanent inter-fund transfer to be held at 7:00 PM prior to commencing the regularly scheduled Board of Education meeting on Monday, August 26, 2019. I move to approve a motion for, as first reading of the Board of Education Policies 3:30 organizational chart, 4:150, community use of buildings, 4:160, hazardous and infectious materials, 4:164, forecasting enrollments, 4:165, evaluating existing buildings, 4:166, determining extent of new construction, 4:170, safety, 4:175, facility planning, 4:185, property control and valuation, 4:190, monies in school buildings, 4:200, use of personal property, and 7:190, student behavior. I move to approve the accounts payable for bills listed between April 24, 2019 and May 20, 2019 in the following amounts. Educational Fund, $414,441.20. O&amp;M Fund, $249,472.42. Debt Services, $22,822.29. Transportation Fund, $187,962.83. And Capital Projects, $7,110 for total all funds of $881,808.74. I move to approve the manual checks issued between April 24, 2019 and May 20, 2019 in the following amounts. Educational Fund, $574,835.78. O&amp;M Fund, $3,798.91. Transportation Fund, $3,898.20 for total all funds of $582,532.89.
Would someone please second the motion?
Second.
The motion has been moved and seconded. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Yes.
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 The yeas have it. Motion carried. This takes us to our conference items. Is there any old business? Any new business? Good in welfare.
I just had a quick one. Dr. Lechner brought it up earlier, but several of us were able to attend the reflections this last week and as usual, it was very well done and also, it's one of those other things that we lose track of over time, but has grown significantly from when Dr. Lechner started working with the process to today where 200 is just kind of an accepted number. So, it was a very nice way to recognize the students and, I mean, the teachers and the administrators and the support staff and have a way of celebrating and recognizing how important they are to our school and our children. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Penzica. Anyone else? Okay, then I need a motion to adjourn the regular meeting.
I move to, I move to adjourn the regular meeting.
May I have a second?
Second.
Motion having been made and seconded, all those in favor of adjournment, please indicate by saying yea.
Yea.
Motion carries by general consent. Thank you. Can I borrow your pen? Or do you have that?